Madam Alungili, itasilsa el merkmi rogui. Pokua asmeretial niyamom 15 day, reel al fifth regular session ergid, reel al longutru imatal government el mora order. Kleri gamu rolgol.
Senator Regis Agitaya.
Oi.
Senator Rukubai Kiguo Inabo.
Oi.
Senator Jonathan Shoy Sal.
Oi.
Senator Stevenson J. Cuarte.
Oi.
Senator TJ Imru Ramasau. Senator Mark Uerbalau Rudim. Senator Ume Sangavau.
Oi.
Senator Kazuki L. Tops Sungino.
Oi.
Senator Andrew Tavalwal.
Oi.
Senator Mason Nireavangal Whipps.
Oi.
Floor Leader Cecilil Aldabel.
Oi.
Vice President Karai Mariur. President Hakons Paulis.
Oi.
Mister President Ngani Akworum.
Ngani Akworum, ya Senator Rudim, ma Senator Mariur, ma Senator Musaua, excuse ter giril el alsilsa. Pokuntira floor leader gida Senator Aldabel, bolongti gaygari daurele, Senator Aldabel.
Mister President, alungili itasilsa mergau ma arbetel senators il ngara session el alsilsa. Oi ado, lomolma al senargidin, Mister President, te di doa isakmasing, kudri koalgiedro maskanding, ne osisultamen diregal gawmila aridedra al selat chamber. Man seel tregel momot adu asabir il absyonertin, il sabir ilma maskertin emotadu, esel wol meregetuk mutulok maskertir. Eh, do lasam al dimotadu, al dimel malteman degal pasal exposurea aradan ngara pitara gid. Mister President, do lomolma aten dam, daborsel item four. Ngania, atablol chonal ngarsema, akmobil adaptra six day chonal for the special session, ma first day chonal, a fifth regular session.
Si la motion namdu esegan, triger rogul gongel do oi. Om tok, namai floor leader.
Eh, kadamolmol nosel item five, mang ngania igel several communication, lukna la obisa deitoral me. Ni denautra press cam 11 dot 134, tiang nomination reappointment tra Mister Benjamin Yobo, el moodala board ra IQPV Palau Environmental Quality Protection Board. Direkal ngania press cam 11 dot 135, tiang luk nomination reappointment tra Mister Benjamin Adalbay, el direkal moodala board ra Palau Environmental Quality Protection Board. Direkal ngania press cam 11 dot 136, etiang luk nomination appointment tra Mister Peter R. Adalbay, el moambasador Ablo Belal Morablasiabal. Esel ulvongala press cam 11 dot 137, el tiang proposal amendment sel mora hospital authority bill. Egidai igel klawal communication na obisa presidentel me, ngania igel el keldel girila appointment sel debor appropriate partakalenda nomes. Edolmolmol nosel item six, mang ayigel luk report ma communication na regel department heads. Ngania department communication 11 dot 18, el tiangagirila mitigation guidance by face giril tal pandemic. Diregan ngania department communication 11 dot 19, luk masadil girila first quarter report endad December 31, 2021. Egidal mutl, malmolmol nosel item seven, el igel luk bills, ma resolution, ma other matters, na House of Delegates. Ma denautra House of Delegates Communication 11 dot 66, tiang luter sel Senate Bill 11 dot 7 ST2, ST3, tasel bilin moestable sera, makreita Belal National Hospital Authority, ma PEBRAMOCTIC. Direkal denautra sel HOD Communication 11 dot 67, el tiangakiril sel Senate Bill 11 dot 48 ST1, ST1, tasel moamender sel the 4 PNC, el require atgora psycho- social autopsy, direkal tarabilergidin la mora houseet, tamla akter ngie oduruklimi. Egidaa ukna la houseel me, daborsel item eight, el report of standing committee. Ti ra do lomolme, Mister President, do tira short wishes.
Short wishes. Madakl mutl, mgodonge session ergidil mora order. Floor leader.
President, kadamolmol mertil atenargidim, ngara item eight. Ma akmobil adaptra Standing Committee Report 11 dot 36, tiangagirila Senate Resolution 11 dot 56.
Si la motion namdu esegan, pokuntira chairman Senator Inabo, bolbiskida report, Senator Inabo.
Solangi, Mister President, omilitasilsa ma bekl senators. Tel standing committee report number 11 dot 36, ama reportal girila Senate Resolution 11 dot 56. En il resolution eh, Mister President, ta moconfirm appointment ra Miss Jubilee K. Cuarte, el momember aboard the Civil Service Pension Plan. El turmer ngie ya ewarra. Ma tel resolution eh, blim introducingi, era December 23. El assignar ngin, mira committee ra waysenmin. A committee nomes, tel resume ra Miss Cuarte, eh, ma kradimo briefly kuaisa, igel ngara resume ngi. Nganga amla raskurak or elementary school, MLE graduate ra Palau High School, era 1996, il class valedictorian. Eh, millamol maskulel, mora Taylor University, ngara Indiana. Ngilu abat salar of science degree ngi ra recreational leadership, MLE minora Christian Education, ngilu tel college degree ngi, era 2000. Amis Cuarte, diregal ngilu a master's degree ngi ra education, especially a post-secondary education leadership. El MLE specialized ra public administration and human resource development from the San Diego State University, era 2017. Amis Cuarte, diregal batoka certification ser ngi, ma accreditation ser ngi, assess as OSAP, ta regional master education trainer, ma OVP, Olympic values education program trainer. Eh, diregal MLE certified ra IOC advanced sports management. Eh, diregal nganga Pacific Games basketball referee manager and evaluator. Eh, diregal certified the FIBA referee, basketball law referee. Mang nganga aureor, el assistant program director ra Baha Fox Studios, ngara Mexico. MLE assistant program director Adventure Learning Center ra Bahamas. Eh, diregal MLE classroom teacher, advisor, coach ra Emaus High School. Il antilen lo aureor, sports development officer ra Palau National Olympic Committee. Ma Miss Cuarte, diregal MLE aureor, program country program manager ra UK Sports. MLE education specialist ra physical education, ra division of curriculum and instruction, ra Ministry of Education. El altaima, Miss Cuarte, aureor el Zone One Coordinator for the Oceania Sports Education Program. Eh, wayal aureor ngareyongela Oceania National Olympic Committee. Ndialmal batoka other work experience, ma volunteer work experience, sel ngiamla motmuringi. Ndiregal MLE ngaria event management experience ser ngi. Eh, wayal organize a committee support team for the ninth micro games in FSN 2018. MLE tournament director for the 17 and under micronation basketball tournament in Palau, 2016. MLE tournament director for the 15 and under micronation basketball tournament in Palau, 2012. Eh, diregal MLE basketball referee manager and organizing committee member ra Belav National Games, 2011, el mo 2021. Sel guktobora ONOC, Oceania. ONOC, Oceania House Administration Team for the Olympic Games, 2008. Ma Commonwealth Games, Australia 2006. Eh, MLE tal ONOC Results Team for the South Pacific Games, era 2001, on North Fork Island. Amis Cuarte, diregal mal experience, laurelo kontrirar tolaab, coordinate efforts, el girila ungil result. Mang mal loaiser gilwasel, sumgadonger ngil mora board ra Civil Service Pension Plan. Eng moaural girila, amangatmo karsel best solution, el mo olngaseo ra pension plan. A committee MLE sendak question sel mora Miss Cuarte, mang loaiser sel commitment ser ngi, el mo sere wayal surabor da CSPP al four years. Mloaisel waseng malmasisi abatingele, sapir mulai kenrogul ngar alel. Etika korangitil conflict of interest ngia, sapir mesangal waseng mo ora tomalitil laureor, al sumang mo atala board. Eh, timloaisel waseng kal ingkora batoka board ra non-government organizations. NGO, el ngia, member ngi, member of Federation International Basketball Association. Diregal member of Palau Basketball Federation Executive Board, eh, member of Palau Basketball Referee Association, eh, member PNC, Palau National Olympics Education Commission. Eh, diregal wayal, partner sel ora parent class representative ra or elementary school, six graders. Amis Cuarte, mal loaiser committee ra el wasera hearing ngi. El mlaringi era durstey, January 20. Alwaseng mal understandai igel challenges sel pension plan afaze. Mang dangel, kmulaseya, igel bekarra, gangara $2 million, salwayal, igel metmo ludow da CSPP. Angasongs, regel motwodel ludow, then more our other mesua benefits, tel pension. Ding waseng mal seize honor, the to be appointed, el mora board. Eh, omraha, ngar waseng girakar ngi. Ma klamb dangir ngi, ma experience ser ngi, ma atetelela management, amongosuwe. El gutmok, regel lungar alel, el mora other Belav. Ndiregal loaisel waseng, ser lola ra master degree ngi ra STSU. Eng lo otara apart assignment ngi, amlo mesra pension plan, ma igel benefit ngar ngi. Walgon lepart ra master thesis ser ngi. Mang tegidel research, selirelira 2017. Eng mal lo omesa igel numbers, en om dangela sa igel metwoda, igel payout at tel pension plan, agutto ra igel lolsisbat tel pension plan ra bekarra. Mang omdasel baseya, mal klotutelela board ra pension plan, abolsapil addressa tegidel challenge. Eh, waseng alsumang mo, ngal tangata mahail mora board. Eng mo sapil, el mo motel, mo komahail, mesuwe igel waseng ngara, amosapil, el gutmakliya, tel pension plana, al motel mo mssisi. Eh, waseng moauror, el girila lobantirirar board, esupporter sel administrative team, al mo gutmakli ma future pension plan, al motel mongil. A committee angkora, amlo okira question ser ngi, er segidra a hearing. Loaiser, ingkora, amlo aisasel konserner ngi, girila waseng tel pension plana, amo paao, omasangal ngi ra 2024. Mang ngkora, amlo aisel waseng, abangar board ra pension planning, eng la diwaya the coach, ra timel sel kotel mitutel timel dibel olmagia. Mang ding waseng ngia, tekal kora amomataktangi deal challenge. Omdasel wasel, sumang moblahar ngudel subik tel plane, gutmakliya, ammssisi, el waseng adomo makarangar, tel plane, gutmakli, and sapedel, el save ra, at tel plane. Tel plana klotutelel, el lang support ra beklobli ra Ablo Belav. Mang ngalka school, man diregal ingklo ludoda tel plana, amora retire sel moshoobli ra Ablo Belav. Ngklotutelela, ba sigya, amorolele, tel plana continue. Ma a committee, amel nomesa, tel resume ra Amis Cuarte, diregal amlo, remexa igel tegin ngel, ma igel, mal amlo convinced, tel wasel, sel commitment ser ngi. Maselul daswell, al waseng sapedel, solbrangidil problem, apota subiya problem, mongil. Eh, the make a informed decision, and sapedel, gutmakliya, amo solution, al motel financial problem ra Civil Service Pension Plan. Mutl segidai, Mister President, a committee omraha waseng kal Miss Cuarte, al board board. Ngil akotan mogiralel, other ngakti al board. Eh, la mo only member aboard, el current link, mo contribute, tel mora pension plan. Mang luk mompe, igel interest, ra mogiralel, other dirgo aureor, eh, morula payment, el mora tel plan. Mang si would be very interested ra making sure, etel plana, sapil, el continue. Ma committee mal work amend, al waseng sapedel gonger, edakan firm appointment tra Miss Cuarte, al motel board ra Civil Service Pension Plan. Solangi, Mister President, desaida committee report tel Senate Resolution Number 11 dot 56.
Mang solangi, Senator Inabo ra malungil report, el girila ngal Miss Jubilee K. Cuarte, ngania sol megagament, Senator Isal.
Malungil, afternoon, Mr. President, ma arbetel membersil attendence. Agote, akpaistremena committee, ndi mbotakte legel mora hearing, ndik milsara TV. Ongerul, amno sobe kalsan na committee report, sekarangal, kiwi, el afternoon. Ndi swagalmokmu edel, togor girilen ngal namanilek, tilgibl madangli. Agote, segidubrel mension ngia, abaitsemen waseng sel lual thesis ser ngi, ra lojura master program ra San Diego State University through PCC. Eh, sel netimer, sel thesis ser ngi, amneti aidil pension plan. Eh, siemle onatiul olbil. Eh, akmetsemen, awesemis, otil olbil, and I believe her, another lady. Adidakal aureor, moru tijidureor, redir. Eh, tamalme intelsi blil, etiganga, adimlaga, adibler tal, obela mesangak. Teriraske juditir, evutl mesangak, five times, ra different months. Esel lemei, eto guko bat tal question. Ra ulel, a pension, eh, limitarama amid. But amande webpaper, segidama, ngali, amanlo kurama danglia, waseng ngalngalga, ngaldila, dijal. Ndialdi dorura, a thesis ser ngi. Nganga swagalmodangliya, alsel, aulel, maplangel, omrolel, tel pension na plube lau, dudogu, waseng paydening, namutokari port, twodala, waseng tiaraswal molmolumu. Omad, al lagada, siga ododu, mora alsel. Ongerul, togor swagalmodulin ngal dil na namani, a tel karakter ngi, ra igal glad report, tabai, aktsremendakamama, ra waysenmin, Senator Inabo. Ngieralel dil, emora school, lemretel meremei. Of course, kambnekasi nganga, demana madrala, involve batoga, Protestant Church, grew up at that level. But involve ra church, involve ra PNC, involve ra betoka activity. Ngadrowson, ngayiset, togosel, kara high school, asing, malmo, arngalga, malmo active levis, malmo betoka, curricular activity setit. Agume sageidai igel liking, ramgelel, other belal, yalam. Tidimo ra school, lemremei. Eh, ngakigel kora extra, involve tidimo, a school, mo basketball, lemremei. Eh, nganga religion, sports, you name it, el involve. Segidai, Mister President, agume serneng. Aygeidai igel studentshel, saradusuil, mora gaiden, igel ngara gaiden board. Netmasat, tiarsiasing ra, arngalela, arabedaol, contribute, al motel pension. Aktimodala, segidil mor ngi, egokratzulete, tel appointment ser ngi. Eh, moosi isegidal gor ngia, chairman Inabo. Sel nomesa, igal appointment, ngal presidentigelelam. Eh, merit, aradal, tegel newbrieth, tegel, tegel ngiril, ardal, meral, meral, komo begidil mo. Morabudul, odai, luu, odairak, ra igal wa pension, maluaises, ma igal various commissions and boards, regid. Akmodasiya, supportan, mor ngi, egokratzulete, shulang.
Shulangi, Senator Isal, malungil gament, Senator Sangavau.
Solangi, Mister President, ra teala. Rogul membera, waysenmin, chending diregal nor ngia, telegel mo part sel confirmation hearing. Mister President, ta mal, mal impressive resume ra Miss Cuarte, ma gada mal ottingira, igel urelele, omraha, pasense, el moru laureor. Ding mal swagal point out, Mister President, el segidil black, kora identifying, kwa singa igidal a, a member el longteer, amigiril, a dal, kantribut, al motel. Langomusindetrigel members, ah, idetamla private sector, malu, toreditamla retire. Mang malmo ngaringi segidil, luk osengel, kwa singiril, omesel, mortigel, adal, luk tirakantibut, el altaim. Edirga kabolola, ayga igel a pension plan, el wa babyan, membersit, al line, makmal, merangasulel, segidil luk osengel, girila, tregel igel, active members. Shula, President.
Shulangi, Senator Sangavau. Senator Sungino.
Solangi, Mister President, ra telege, malungili itasilsa merbegla. Aktimo, obingela, Chairperson, eh, mal, diregal malmo aureasulel, girila malungil report, el mildu, ma igel togor mildu, alsel. Aktirgal mal, ngania telegel, lurel, obingela, ngal Miss Cuarte, eh, mal, sel mal, utobingil, krisiel, sel part ledilir, report, kwa sing netusel, mo oswalgotse, sel gotel mitutel tim. Le akmedangliar, ngulil, kwa sing segidir, ngulil, omeset, tregel igel, losagoler, sel tim, kumagaranada, build, etigel igel, ngalga. El mor ngisel, winning, aritu dirtir. Segidil, character development, ra togora sports, el even dogmal medu. Ndeka oiti, segidil, momalara, golto, eh, willing, il mo oswol, lobingel, ngelgotel, metitul, lego omraha, kwa sing ngagi dil, player sel, ol ngari, sel winning, aritu, ngira, klangar ngi. And sapil, luk super sinera, igel babyra, togora klogol, at togora klangar, el bol, el bangan ngi. Ngora, ngiradel, togoinding, mal klobelugul, lem, mesangra, alignment, in motel, togora, lure, lourngil, lem. Mesangal, kwa sing, tasel dogor, omesengi, meril, lure, liga, togora ododu. Eh, dijal, ododu, eh, meril, regid, osigil, kwa sing magarangada. Sigya formulanding, mesa segidil, aritu de, mesa segidil challenge, is willing to go there and for look for answers, el correcta problem. Akwara di, luk segidil, mo atatsesegidil, character development, temal, aureasulela, Chairperson, emla, ngandak, tra malungil hearing. Amno sobe, luk prongasi, diregal mal, lonyeta support, shulang.
Shulangi, Senator Sungino. Degangodo. Sumdegangodo, etiger rogul gongel, tel standing committee report 11 dot 36, el dooi.
Oi.
Om tok, namai floor leader.
Mister President, kadamolmol, a standing committee report, ma kadamolsel next, ma mobil adaptra standing committee report 11 dot 37, tiangakiril sel Senate Resolution 11 dot 59.
Si la motion namdu esegan, pokuntira chairman Agitaya, bolbiskida report.
Chairman Agitaya. Mr. President, atas, Senator Sungino, mal, dodasian report.
Senator Sungino.
Shula, Mister President, mal, again, umilitasilsa merbegla. Agurenasulela, chairman Agitaya, luk mesabel, skate ala, makmo report, etel standing committee report 11 dot 37. Ma tel committee report, a committee ra Energy, Public Utilities and Telecommunications, amne refer, resolution number 11 dot 59. Lentaireler ngia, tayreler ngia, Senate Resolution, al confirm ra appointment tra Mister Swin R. Yamada, el mo member aboard of directors, Palau National Communication Corporation, for a term of four years. Ah, intenta, tel resolution, evident, traitol, ngi, Mister President. Mang tiangablim introducing by request, eh, a committee, amlo sapil, ngu, eh, ogore, amangatmo, ngelurerel, giril, tiang, giril, ngal namani, eh, may report, el alsilsa. Ma committee, nosapel, rivi, ah, nomination, igel resume, ngal namani, el ngora, mulu, il girila advancement, ra tiang, togora telecommunication infrastructure, abelwa. La committee, amlo rivi, ra resume, eh, milte, ikmasengal, Mister Yamada. Ngania, Erna Associate of Science Degree, ngi, ra business. Associate of Science Degree in Business, ra El Paso Community College. Diregal nosapel, Erna Bachelor of Arts Degree ngi, el MLE major, ra psychology, MLE minora business. Mister Yamada, diregal ngan, didetel mora BSEE, University of Colorado. Diregal ngara, Mister Yamada, amle, amplit, ra CCNA, Course, Horizon Tech College. A committee, diregal milte, ikmasengal, Mister Yamada, amle, new product. He is a new product manager and planner. He promotes questions and answers analyst. He is the IBM Colorado Springs. He is a world company, MCI World Company. He is a telecommunications company. He is a representative. I want to know about the officials. I want to know about the trend analyst. Inbound customer service analyst. System analyst. System analyst three. I want to know about the official. He is a self-employed. He runs custom homes in Colorado Springs. He is a returner. He is a part-time computer instructor in Palau Community College. He is a administrator at Belau National Hospital. I want to know about the official. I want to know about the official. I want to know about the question. I want to know about the question. I want to know about the four-year term. He is a professional. He is a professional. Financial dealings. He is a lawyer. He is a conflict attorney. He is a lawyer. He is a member of any government board. He is an authority. Mr. Yamada is a professional. He is a four-year term. He is a professional. He is a physical. He is a professional. He is a conflict attorney. He is a lawyer. He is a membership. He is a board. I want to know about Wednesday, January nineteen. I want to know about the chairman of the House. I want to know about the members. I want to know about the chairman of the House. I want to know about the chairman of the House. I want to know about the Senate. I want to know about the official. 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 Education background. I want to know about the experience. I want to know about the official. 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 During the hearing. I want to know about the official. I want to know about the official. I want to know about the official. General manager. I want to know about the official. I want to know about the official. The opening. I want to know about the official. I want to know about the official. I want to know about the official. Mr. President.
Mr. President Isal, I want to know about the report. I want to know about it. I want to know about it. I want to know about it. I want to know about the report. Eleven thousand eighty-seven. I want to talk. Namai, floor leader.
Mr. President, I want to know about the report. I want to know about the next. I want to know about the report. Eleven thousand eighty-eight. The Senate Resolution eleven thousand sixty-one.
I want to know about the Senate. I want to know about the chairman of the House. I want to know about the report. Senator Inavo.
Mr. President, I want to know about the members of the Senate. Senator Sangavam, I want to know about the report. Mr. President.
Senator Sangavam.
Mr. President, I want to know about the official. 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 I want to know about the Senate Resolution eleven thousand sixty-one. The Senate Resolution, Mr. President. Confirm the presidential reappointment. Mr. William Ngiraygalaw. A member of the Civil Service Pension Plan Trust for a term of four years. I want to know about the official. 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 Elementary School. I want to know about the Palau High School. I want to know about the official. I want to know about the official. Black Hill State University. I want to know about Bachelor of Science degree in Business Administration. I want to know about the official. I want to know about the official. I want to know about the official. I want to know about accounting. Finance Department. I want to know about the official. Mechanism Occupational College. I want to know about the official. I want to know about the official. I want to know about the official. I want to know about the Civil Service Pension Plan. It was nineteen eighty-eight. I want to know about the official. National Development Bank. It was nineteen ninety-two. I want to know about the official. I want to know about the official. I want to know about the official. I want to know about the Palau National Congress. It was nineteen ninety-three. I want to know about two thousand nine. I want to know about the official. It was two thousand nine. I want to know about the official. I want to know about the Palau Civil Service Pension Plan. I want to know about it. I want to know about the official. 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 I want to know about it. I want to know about it. I want to know about the official. 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 I want to know about it. I want to know about it. I want to know about the official. 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 Investment. I want to know about it. I want to know about the official. 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 I want to know about the official.
Mr. President Isal. I want to know about it. I want to know about the report. Eleven thousand eighty-eight. I want to talk. Namai, floor leader.
Mr. President, I want to know about the report. I want to know about the nine. I want to know about the bill calendar. I want to know about the first. My second reading. Third reading. I want to know about the third reading. I want to know about the final reading. Senate Bill eleven thousand seven, S D two, H D three.
I want to know about the Senate.
Senate Bill number eleven thousand seven, S D two, H D three. A bill for an act to create the Belau National Hospital Authority and for other related purposes. I want to know about the official. I want to know about the official. I want to know about Senator Stevenson J. Quartey. Senate President Hoconz Baulis. Senate Vice President Karai Mariur. Senate Floor Leader Cecilil Aldebel. Senator Gubai K. Inavo. Senator Regis Agitaya. Senator Chona Tancho Isal. Senator Mason Yebangal Wips. Senator Andrew Tabalwal. Senator Umi Sangavam. Senator Kazuki Eutap Sungino. And Senator TJ Imruur Monsao.
I want to know about the Senate. I want to know about the Senate. I want to know about the Senate. Senator Quartey.
Mr. President, I want to ask you. I want to know about the official. I want to know about the official. Mr. President, I want to know about the Senate. I want to know about the Senate. I want to know about the Senate. Mr. President, I want to know about the Senate. I want to know about the Constitution. I want to know about the official. I want to know about the official. I want to know about the official. Free or subsidized. I want to know about the official. 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 Mr. President, I want to know about the official. I want to know about the official. I want to know about the official. Mr. President, I want to know about the official. I want to know about the official. I want to know about the hospital. 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 I want to know about the healthcare fund. I want to know about the hospital. Mr. President, I want to know about the hospital. 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 Improve our service. Level our service. I want to know about the hospital. I want to know about the hospital. I want to know about the hospital. Ministry of Disease. Ministry of Health. I want to know about the hospital. I want to know about the hospital. Mr. President, I want to know about the House. I want to know about the senators. I want to know about the senators. I want to know about the House. I want to know about the House. I want to know about the President. Communication. I want to know about eleven thousand one hundred and seventy-seven. The President. I want to know about the Speaker. I want to know about the changes. I want to know about the changes. I want to know about the changes. I want to know about the page three. I want to know about the twenty-one. I want to know about the twenty-one. I want to know about the twenty-eight. I want to know about the Senate. I want to know about the amendment. 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 I want to know about the health service. Mr. President, I want to know about the official. I want to know about the flexibility. Adapt the international standard. I want to know about the appropriate. I want to know about the official. I want to know about the amendment. I want to know about the line two. I want to know about the line two. I want to know about the line two. I want to know about the point. I want to know about the appropriate. I want to know about the line eighteen. Again, in terms of management level, policy level. I want to know about the administration of Belau National Hospital. I want to know about hiring and firing the hospital administrator. I want to know about the appropriate. I want to know about the page five. I want to know about the section three, five, six. Transition Plan. I want to know about the House. I want to know about the House. I want to know about the transition plan. I want to know about the transition plan. I want to know about the hospital. I want to know about the hospital. And human services. I want to know about the hospital. I want to know about the plan. I want to know about the plan. I want to know about the House. I want to know about the House. I want to know about the plan. I want to know about the primary. I want to know about the OPD. I want to know about the hospital. 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 I want to know about the page six. The legislative amendment, line six. I want to know about the official. I want to know about the official. I want to know about the change. In order. I want to know about the line nine. I want to know about the official. I want to know about the recommendation. Not limited to. I want to know about the procurement. I want to know about the House. I want to know about the official. I want to know about the determination of completion. I want to know about the transition amendment. Mr. President, I want to know about the House. I want to know about the House. I want to know about the Health Professional License Board. I want to know about the insurance. I want to know about the insurance. I want to know about the House. I want to know about the minister. I want to know about the official. I want to know about the line five. The line 15, the budget. The president said that the board should approve. The House should approve. The unified budget should be approved. The authority should be approved. The unified budget should be approved. The line 22, the language should be approved. The feasibility study should be approved. The funding should be approved. The health insurance should be approved. The tertiary insurance should be approved. The line 29. The minister should approve. The board should approve. The people should approve. The board should approve. The people should approve. The board should approve. The line six, the ministry of Health and Human Services should provide the information. The board should approve. The president's office. The people should approve. The requirements of the transition. The ministry should approve. The power should approve. The last one, the right there, the amendment should be approved. The COVID. The page eight. The people should approve. The grant, the year 2022. The COVID-19, the exception procurement. The bill should be approved. The president will approve. Mr. President.
Sula, Senator Cuarte, I would like to update the issue. The people of Belau should approve. The Senator Cuarte said that the people of Belau should approve. Maria Swale, Medical Committee, Senator Isar.
Mr. President, I would like to introduce the doctor. The doctor is the senator. The senator is the doctor. The doctor is the doctor. The doctor is the doctor. For example, we spend a lot of Christmas on hospitals. We spend a lot of time on hospitals. We want to improve services, personnel, and the management of hospitals. The people should approve. The people should approve. It is cheaper for hours from Papua New Guinea, Philippines, two hours. If we approve. If we approve, Philippines, the Philippines, the Iraq. The Iraq, the Iraq. The SEC, the OREO. The people of Belau. So we have come a long way. The people of Cuba. For the past year or so. In fact, February, the examination was approved. The doctor was approved. The dressing in disguise. The hospital should approve. The hospital should approve. It seems that there are new things going in. There is new personnel, there is new machines, there is new technology. The people should support. The people should approve. The people should approve. The people should approve. The experts should approve. The outside mailing. We are lacking that expertise. The people of the House should approve. The five members should approve. The expertise should approve. The outside members should approve. This is heavy stuff. It is going to be a new thing for us. The people should approve. The people should approve. The people should approve. The national hospital authority. The president said that the people should approve. The grant should be approved. The policy decision. The House should approve. The people 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 should approve. We got to do it now. It's a good beginning. Sula, Mr. President.
Sula, Senator Isar, I would like to comment, Senator Songo.
Senator Monsao, the House. I would like to say that the chairman of the House, Senator Cuarte, should approve the rules. The people of Belau should approve. The people of Belau should approve. The people should approve. The president. The people of Belau should approve. The people should approve. The people should approve. The people should approve. The people of the House should approve. The people should approve. The people should approve. The joint resolution should be approved. The concern is that the people should approve. The president should approve. The people should approve. The people should approve. The people should approve.
Sula, Senator Songo. Senator Cuarte.
Sula, Mr. President. The Senator Songo is on page six, line four. Transition plan shall be considered, adopted when affirmed by joint resolution. The underlining, Mr. President. The issue should be approved. The change should be approved. The change should be approved. The people should approve. The people should approve. The people should approve. The people should approve. The future should be private hospital. The people should approve. The people of Belau should approve. The private sector should be approved. The people should approve. The public space should be approved. The people should approve. The people should approve. The technology, the computer. The hospital should be virtual. The people should approve. The decision of the House should be approved. The transition should be approved. The initial plan should be approved. The people should approve.
Sula, Senator Cuarte. Senator Inabo.
Sula, the president said that the medical committee should approve the amendment, R P P L 11-12. The amendment should approve. Outside grants and development assistance. The line eight, line two. The outside grant funding should be approved. The fiscal year 2022. The response should be approved. The coronavirus pandemic should be approved. The exemption from procurement process for P N C Chapter 6. Mr. President, the attention of the Department of Communication, 11-19. The financial report for the fourth quarter, FY 2022. I would like to attach the Attachment eight, Mr. President. The report should approve. The grant should approve. Eleven pages. The page two. The Federal Department of Health and Human Services, U.S. Federal Department of Health and Human Services Grants on Belau. The page four, the total, 32.8 million. The 12.8 million. The 20 million. Mr. President, the most of COVID-19. The page three, 5.6 million. The people should approve. The 1.2 million. The grant should approve. The response should approve. Mr. President, the people should approve. The response should be approved. The outside grant should be approved. The system should be approved. The health fund should be approved. The people should approve. The president said that the people should approve. The House should approve. The committee should approve. The outside grant should be approved. The people should approve. The other areas should be approved. The Republic of China, Taiwan, May. The page eight, the message should be approved. The grant should be approved. The president said that the access should be approved. The 20 should be approved. The grant should be approved. The medical committee should approve. The bill should be approved. The people should approve. Sula, Mr. President.
Sula, Senator Inabo. Senator Isar.
The president said that the senator Cuarte should approve. The people should approve. We cannot run the hospital the way it is in the past. The people should change. The system should be improved. The yards should be improved. The people should approve. The transition period, as the senator said, is financial aspect of the issue. The House should approve. The hospital should approve. The people should approve. The people should approve. The budget should be approved. The revenue should be approved. One, the health insurance should be approved. The people should approve. The national hospital authority. The people should approve. The institution should be approved from now. The pension plan should be approved. The foundation should be approved. The transition should be approved. The people should approve. The people should approve. The people should approve. The patients should be approved. The health insurance should be approved. The people should approve. The people should approve. The people should approve. The people should approve. The smoothly riding scheme. Relax. It is impossible to approve. Evidence is going to be virtual. It's going to be expensive. Sula.
Sula, Senator Isar. Senator Aldebel.
Sula, the House. I would like to say that the president said that the administration should approve. The success of the government should The improvement of the bill should be approved. The president should approve. The people should approve. The people should approve. The people of the House should approve. The people of the House should approve. The amendment should be approved. The exception to the outside grant should be approved. Ak ti kor a, adi konser il giril akmasi, ah, ah, klamudan i gedel i gel, toka ra grant, tooni i gel amri i gel may. Ah, mal giril ol ti ra, klap procurement. Ah, len, ah, i ge direk al mosabsektal mora i ga i gedel audit. Ah, assume kudulala, al, al wa da, ah, the exempta procurement ra i gi gedel grant, al may. I gel el bol, oi ta tura, guk, future ability i gedel, malak grant, ah, tooni ma ablur amri gel. Ak ti race, sel konser len, omisin ra i gel audit findings, ah, ah, ablaol findings, il giril i ge getel, federal grant, al me, maseor ablur belau. Eh, elsukum, ngari ya, i ge getel wal findings, ndikal wal kor a impact ra i ge getel guk, ah, tekele grant or agencies, il guk, meski da future, malu ben kontiniwiti ra fund. Mang, di swakal bring upers i ge gete, ndikal osi sil time, em, eh, swakal, ndikal, al, il wa da loa, mutal exploit tiel, lo ba ki la Presidente, ma, especially Minister of Finance, el, el malmo understand the impact ra, i ga i gedel, el, el grant, ngara outside al may, eh, the exempta procurement teri ni. Len, akote, lu gule i gedda, napasasil la, al, responsible, fiscal responsible, l'lima i ga i gedel eh, eh, matakwa i ge getel kor a basic principles, il giril da ol ti ra, le, m'atmoqla yo sam, malu bodo moit au do. Ya, da, ah, klo part teri ni, toka ra procurement, gi il ngari se i gedel, al wal, transparency, ma fairness ra, omi ni tel au do, il bala taqal ngara la. Sel guk toba daru la la, al guk mo, move ta i ga i gedel from time to time. El chespi go se kada, mla mo meudra, a timing ra i gel grant, um dasen, la ngari ya option, il sebe edel ogi uni, kada melu sel mora grant or agencies. Il, il, esker ti, il, il extend la, ah, a lapse, ah, sel, sel lapsing day tra i gel, el grant. Rather than propose alla, al, ah, al, al, exempta procurement teri ni. Len, se i get again, ak, ak, di konser se i get, kuna sing, abol, ah, kor a practice, il doru ni la bekel time, em, do bal, ngari ya dealer a grant, te, malu ben dealer, omi ni tel au do, demro bo da. Wa do siga, or a role, or re dal moit au do, len bigosin, kada bi kra, ah, sel lutod, mo lapse. Eh, the way brama klotutale, komponent ra la, um dasen se i geta, ndikal korada gal lungil, si asing, il, domesengi il giril la government, ma, ah, kli seel olbeel kalulau, manggarra, atalitel, omi ni tel au do, rablur belau. Ak ti swakal, di race se i gete, Mister President, for, ah, ah, everyone's, ah, understanding, et tiel guk korak, i gal gal konser na, kalgi dal tiang, eh, ndi kada mal, mera ngasulela Presidente. Il, di regalo, rollo bangge, em, di regal, di regal batablelen, mal duruk la recommendation, il men, meski da assurance, em, di regal support ra oi te i gedel, klotutale luda, sumala. Sula Presidente.
Sula ni, Senator, Aldabeal, Senator Isal.
Mister Presidente, mo duha, Senator Aldabeal, Floridere, memadi kriti al giril mora doktan, Senator, len, a minister, em, a mantralia. Minister, Senator Cuarte, isel hospital, um, ministry, M H S, a apply gal grant. Tiel lutod, sel le meng, mora, a ministry, adan, mora program, la undera, a hospital. Len se i geta, la omisra ngari ya, missing lingali, lesu mumra ministry. Eh, eh, ngari ya, adlo ngare i ge gete lutoda ministry. Lesu mumra program within the bureau or division, balu ben kuas espisit tiang, mora hospital, mora rang. Se i geta, la la amonia isur gedel. Mang, i, i gang, sel le meng, mora M O H, adan mora hospital, adan mora both.
Senator Cuarte.
Sula, mal ngare, Senator Isal, akote, dikmei ga amendmental mora, sel konser na Floridere, mal valid konser. Di, ki damriel wasi, ah, sera lastel leadership meeting, akulagirra, a minister, ah, held del wasi, kada ngara, kada di, kada ngara emergency. Amnekotel hensing, ya soi, kada ngara health emergency. Ma, health emergency, Mister President, understanding, ah, se kada way ba procurement requirement, orsel Hospital Trust Fund. Tiel, ngari ya, ngak, understand ra, lolkor niya Floridere, in normal times. Ndiktili kala understand ra, lolkor niya Senator Inavo, wasi, but we're not in normal times. Mang, diada way ba, a procurement ra i ge il funding, guk ti gel di funding, il mora Covid twenty-two. Er, il ra, because we are now in the height of that emergency. Ma, mal understand i galbo, the, the side argument, ah, debate, ndi kala umdasen wasi, with, ah, a requirement i gel federal program. Ah, sen, now, i gel language, i gel federal program, ah, omulti ra. Ni the way you draw down au do, da ulti akla lutu. Mang, gi da set losing, mala ngara, eh, ngari al ulak procurement. Mang, um dasen, for emergency times, em, gi dal domesengi se i get, rather than sel, maybe a vola se del spend, eh, kada return, that's another issue. Guk ti ngela, i gal, l'grant, eh, Senator Isal, la, mri gel ngariya, ki da, mal dim sa da, mri gel, ndi ngariya bebe ra grant, em, kado relais se. Amri gel ngariya tul, agency ngariya, imo a Hursa, em, imo a C D C. A funding ra C D C, amora public health, omora ministry health, a funding ra Hursa, amora hospital, le se, a oror ta hospital. Ya bebe i gel, ah, uli ngariya language, il, il, ah, house ali yang, eh, umil language, ndi luo wasi. Eh, i gel klagal, ngar tei del hospital, sel, 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 la waiya opidi, malu ben public health del lospe, bol ngariya agreement, tamra ni se il di tel, ah, ngar sel, al execute a contract. Ni al ngar tiel la, ndi beni, ndi ngela lela, lemba il uli mo di tel. Ndise, i gel rogui, including i gel lutod, ngara public health, let's say, lutod, mora suwal. Nditi ra, ngariya testel, sel la, a, a hospital, em, omorongi ra tarata, et a execute a contract, eh, make a, a funding arrangement. That's how they make money out of, i ga i gedel program. Ma hospitala, di kesa pele, make money out of it, il di yora contract, ala sa na, hospital, ma ministry health. Ah, opa se clarifyo, sula.
Sula ni, Senator Cuarte, sum di gang, eh, bodo sentio. Clerga mwarol gule.
Senator, Senator Regis Agitaya.
Oi.
Senator Gubai, Kikubu Inavo.
Oi.
Senator Jonathan Shoy Sal.
Oi.
Senator Stevenson J. Cuarte.
Oi.
Senator Umi Sangavao.
Oi.
Senator Kazuki El Taps Sunino.
Oi.
Senator Andrew Tabalwal.
Oi.
Senator Mason, Yire Eva Al Wips.
Oi.
Floridere Cecilil Aldabeal.
Oi.
President Hokons Paulis.
Oi.
Mister President, asinkio, aten aliyes, ediagano.
Tiel lutasul mola, amla mngara Senate, el ten yes, ediagano. Di ten, le, artedergi da absent. Mang, di ten, yes, majority tiel blai. Floridere.
Mister President, kada, morse, next bill, ngarud reading, ma, ma, da pasara Senate Bill eleven das, forty-eight, S T one, H T one, ra, third and final reading.
Si la motion, nam doni sheng, ndikal klotul montira, Senator Cuarte, bol meski da, omso del tiang, ra, era bodo sentio. Senator Cuarte.
Sula, Mister Presidente, tiel, te direk al Senate Bill, ma, kumra ngasulela rogui, Senator sel giril la, aurorin no, mra il mori, em, nor a house, et, tamna, kutmoqla i gel guk, kureli, le, sendi ni may. Tiel, bill eh, Mister Presidente, do donil wasi, ngariya time, ya bebe ra Senator, sa, no, no salerel, em, le, le, gal giril la, ah, adam, malu et, ngayaskal, di tel malakla ngarati. No bala taqra i gel ulerel la, amitil gasil time, wasi, mra ngariya, ngai alaksi, ah, do, trust territory code, blada adapt teri ni may, ah, a requirement, autopsy mori ni ra adal, koram, ah, mad eh, eh, i ge da di adasal, menilo se trikat, tamla dari. Ah, malu ben ngara ul, em, mergo ngai, ah, autopsy, mo atmoqlo, si gel wasi, ngamil ngarangi, em, eh, ma. Ndise lebora, ah, suicide, em, ngai al, lamla al, um dasen sel time, ra, atiti, lemku sa la, da, la, amalakla ngarati, mindi na kasa priority. Ni gal, lamamre gal, nu ira, ya domesengi wasi, ngayasko, tol, ada, amal mostres, em, mora point, where et, tomo di tel, lamla kla ngarati. Met tiang, am, am le, ulaswe la Senate, wasi, medo te di tiang, lo wasi, sel, suma ada, dingi lungakla ngari. El bo, mera ni se i get, social, psychosocial autopsy. Ngai abolo, do gurri, resira ber, sel wasi, ngara, am le ul, len, i gedel ada, malu wa i se. Bol sele, a Ministry of Health, demu la i gel program, el mo appropriate, el mo prevent, em, ndi hal, ar ada, dehal di tel, um dasen wa i se. Met tiang, nor a house, eh, temle adapt teri ni, rogi, except for, sel obora page one, ra line twenty-four. Et, temlo omri, debate, relantutao, il giril se i gedel, lo, removal ni. Wasi, bo i le, mandil Director of Public Health, malu ben Attorney General, amo, goonge, wasi, autopsy, giril, psychosocial autopsy, mo atmoqlo. Te laal, all involved niya Presidente, matamlong betisel, et, tulamso, singariya time, me kala bo kor a political. Tiel, change, sa dimla, ngar gi dal mong, tiya, ah, ngar sel original bill. Mang di se i get, hablil change in ye, et, ramle adapter tiel, tiel bill, ra Senate, as it was, di se i get a change, Sir President.
Riagodo, Senator Inavo.
Um, sula ni, Presidente, ak mal, mera ngasulela, House of Delegates, em, osu pele, goonge tiel lutasam mola. Mister Presidente, mal, um, ngari seel section five seventy-one, tiel lutasam mola, il wasing, mori ya suicide prevention. Ki dam bengel wasing, um, amleklo konser agi da, i ga i gedel suicide, then, al hapen. Eh, eh, wai al biaka, a prevention, diaka, diaka adrol ngaseor, tiel giel, wal mo, um daswa, a suicide. Mang, I hope eh, sel section five seventy-one, il Director of Bureau of Public Health, damo kutmoqla regulations, em, mo implemented, tiel lutasam mola. Il ni, il culturally appropriated, appropriate, and evidence-based, ah, mra il mo, ngari ya, klo impact, teri ni, il prevent a suicide. Ma, ak mal di mera ngasulela Chairman of Committee, il, wai al, blil, al katmakliya, response, or oldbeel, il mori i gel, bato kal suicide, demor ni, ma, Senator, sa, man ni raise a concern ni giril. Ma, temera ngasaul, tiel lutasam mola, eh, eh, mal hoping, mo help, bato kal, me garila, adam, ngidi la, adar bela, il mori ni a, agora, taarel, basur ra role la lutasam. Sula ni, Mister Presidente.
Sula ni, Senator Inavo, Senator Isal.
Direk lo mo, te support, anara motiang, ndi, redirek lo mesengi, i gal, ni sent li, events ablou, kiel kor a, ni sa ba bengel, ak chairman ra, a held del mergaul, giril i gal, toki ra, kana ra school, ak wada, si la pasi, buli ni. Eh, omisra tiel, toki a suicide, a, a giril, malmo understand, ri, doctor Cuarte, wasi, Senator Cuarte, asin, al tiadakal, di isur ablai. Ni isur ablai, basco, ya umdaswa school, la taikman, namo cloa, is, awijen, analka mo, kamit a suicide. Na, pa, mla bitoklo. Namodakal, eh, 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 blai, namodakal, family uli, ngalka mo opsi. Um dasin tiagidu bully ni, a school, ala ngalakal, mo brak, demora school, demora depressed, et cetera, et cetera. Edi tel wa life, si, ak umdasak, to, bulgul, puti la, amo riori, amo si, demo omesengi, lasi. So, whereas, i gal, suicide initiator, eh, eklo ya initiator. Real sad, non si seril billith. Clear by outside, school, community, bebe ra basio. Sula.
Senator Sangavao.
Sula, Mister Presidente, te al, tiya, mal, direk al dawreng, ah, sula la, galiks seki da house, sel, losi ipasar ni, mal important, il issue, giril dal mo utmakli. Ak ti regal, Mister Presidente, um, aten shone agi dal, wa i cel, lolkor niya, Senator Inavo, mor se i ge dal, toka ra suicide prevention. Akumra kuasi, ah, Bureau of Public Health, ah, sel vote promulgate, i ge gete regulation, se, Mister Presidente, giril moro lo bangge la school. Len, um dasen giril, discuss et tiel issue. Ah, ngaramo, Mister Presidente, ti gel, mla school, adimla, losa da wa sex education, ra school. Lem sa da wa S T D, ndi ga, mla mo part, ra, giril, lem sa da ra school. Um dasen, tiya, giril, i gel regulation, sel, el mo atmoq, al, direk al mo part teri ni, ah, ah, discuss i gal school, marada mo aware, em, mo mdeyek, masi. Al suuma, koram umdaswa i ga i gedel lutasen, ta nga giril gal golen ni, ta nga, sebe gal mo duu ni. Len, um, only when you bring something to the open, eh, Mister Presidente, arada mo mimoqle, mo, talibel, sel ba ak, klo du swir, kuasi. Diaka di ngaral, ta nga, di regal, umdaswa wa i se. Tiang, a part, ra, rogui, sel society, sel bo niya, ku kor a stress i ge, ngaraklai, ya kada mo umdaswa i ga i gedel toki, mang, akumra kuasi, nguni la, Director of Public Health, sel bo atmoqla i gel regulation, se, bol, karik, kal, mo include ra school, il giril tiang. Malu bo se il part, ra curriculum, part, ra guk, i ge gete, lam swir, eh, di regal, mo swir, understand, da i ga i gedel issue. Sula, Mister Presidente, te al.
Sula ni, Senator Sangavao, Senator Cuarte.
Sula, Mister Presidente, kurense ra Senator Isal, ma Senator Sangavao, swakal di, mo, muten legal, wasi sera September, rel arra, ah, mina, twenty twenty-one. Niya tilo se i gedel, mal, klo lam swir, ni la i gel rogui, research, a Pacific, em, me odage, otoda conclusion, eti. Part teri ni, lolkor niya Senator Isal, wasi, sel family unit, em, le protect, ra ngal, gal elanga, namogegi, amogegogil, disintegrate. Mal, bo wa i se, demu dekcel, set cohesion, sel ol, uy, lo, muy, ra, adam, tamil, wasi, ta kari, len, di, the part, ta kara, support system. Awnyarun, um, ngari abes ablur adal, mra il may, um dasen, kada di, kuma introduc, ah, cyberbullying, mora, ulalar tiel blai. Ya umdasen, eh, tiel psychological, psychosocial autopsy, uli global gula, mo kalek, tiagidu, wasi, ngari abes, il, il threaten. Seri, do kor a, second reading, akno present, wasi, two thousand four, two thousand seven, two thousand thirteen, elan two thousand nineteen. I gel time, il bo niya pandemic, eh, it's ra ngal, kal, me kamita suicide, amlo yo. So, we should be on the watch right now. We should be on the watch. Ma, uli global gule, tiya, mal timely, um dasen, di regal, malungil, mal, damre dal, ngu, mal ora il, malu bo se lauror, lo, mo, ra damre dal time. Sula.
Sula ni, Senator Cuarte, di gangodo. Sum, di gangodo, eh, clerga mwarol gule.
Senator Regis Agitaya.
Oi.
Senator Gubai, Kikubu Inavo.
Oi.
Senator Jonathan Shoy Sal.
Oi.
Senator Stevenson J. Cuarte.
Oi.
Senator Umi Sangavao.
Oi.
Senator Kazuki El Taps Sunino.
Oi.
Senator Andrew Tabalwal.
Oi.
Senator Mason, Yire Eva Al Wips.
Oi.
Floridere Cecilil Aldabeal.
Oi.
President Hokons Paulis.
Oi.
Mister President, ten aliyes, ediagano.
Uldasan mola. El ngiya Senate Bill eleven dash forty-eight, ST one, ST one, amla magar teal blai ten yes, Ediagano. Surtrices. Tutulmodona sessioner gi del mora order. Law leader.
Mr. Presidente, the adoborisese kadiri giril bil calendar, melakadukmo ra resolution calendar. La nyagil keldel el appointment sel ngara referral, ngari sel Senate Resolution six eleven dash sixty-three mokanformer appointment tra Mr. Ben Benjamin Yeop, el mo odala EQPB. Pirekana nyas Senate Resolution eleven dash sixty-four, lukmokanformer Ben Benjamin Adelbay, el diregal mo odala EQPB. Msel Senate Resolution eleven dash sixty-five etamokanformer appointment tra Mr. Peter Adelbay, el ma ambassador, el ma Belasiabal. Ayedak keldel ngara referral, Mr. President, ma meka ana assignment tra amitil mo omsu wayegid al appointments, every report.
Ayegil tablol mora Palau Environmental Quality Protection Boarda mora aygen mora Senator Isal, ngora Senator Songo. Sabasangao. Kabo.
Senator Songo. Itigaddiro rubaga, tiramnamo butokala imirak, nutu irak ra adat teal bor. Agomdasin nyagane si seril dohla yedige dohlu si mortir. Triganga lastir tumektam tundra yedinga gi delabunged lukti desel budgetetir bela gatrigi. Ea Presidente, namutapointer tir. Mumine hiyes confidence ande. Mang agolgitasile bom, edil bol lila reporte me, lasen endosaygal appointment tra Presidente e wigo e paygan ra amalu si ma yedig.
Ogay bo lo ayse ogiwa recommendation ra Chairman ra JGE ak assigna egal mora Chairman ra Senator Songo. Esel appointment tra Peter Adelbay, el mo Ambassador, mora blue ra Siabal, la mora Chairman Yireavangal. Senator Yireavangal. Law leader.
Alayse, Mr. Presidente, bodiul mora apa adoption. Mel taim ekmu madadap tra Senate Resolution eleven dash fifty-six. Na trigal clear mel iba taitol, esperase.
Clear gam iba taitol.
Senate Resolution number eleven dash fifty-six. A Senate Resolution confirming the presidential appointment of Miss Jubilee K. Quartey to serve as a member of the Board of Trustees of the Republic of Palau Civil Service Pension Plan and Trust for a term of four years. The Senate Resolution number eleven dash fifty-six amogongela presidential appointment tra Miss Jubilee Quartey el mo odala Board of Trustees ra Palau Civil Service Pension Plan and Trust del Consele Ewalra. The Senate Resolution number eleven dash fifty-six aluldercia Presidenta Senate by request.
Si esere resolution giril a Miss Jubilee Quartey mo odala pension plan, mgedambo sentyo. Maria Soame, Senator Inabou, Senator Inabou.
Msulangi, Mr. Presidente, yagulit ma setasaidarul seboda senkyo ra Miss Quartey by acclamation.
Si la motion namdu ne seken, metrigel roguil gongel du oi. Om tok. Namoyse ma senkyo by acclamation. Law leader.
Sir, Mr. Presidente, tablol akmasengami ngaliyina nemose. Ela amorsel nextel adapts resolution ma moveal adapt tra Senate Resolution eleven dash fifty-nine.
Si la motion namdu ne seken.
Iba taitol, e clear?
Clear gam iba taitol.
Senate Resolution number eleven dash fifty-nine. A Senate Resolution confirming the presidential appointment of Mr. Swin R. Yamada to serve as a member of the Board of Directors of the Palau National Communications Corporation for a term of four years. The Senate Resolution number eleven dash fifty-nine amogongela omalkela Mr. Swin R. Yamada el mo odala Board of Directors of Palau National Communications Corporation el Consele Ewalra. The Senate Resolution number eleven dash fifty-nine aluldercia Presidenta Senate by request.
Si esere resolution mora Mr. Swin Yamada, gdambo sentyo, Maria Soame, Senator Sungino.
Oi, Mr. President, surat el lege, yagulit ma saveli do onongal ulte alula eda bodes senkyo by acclamation.
Si la motion namdu ne seken, metrigel roguil gongel du oi.
Oi.
Om tok. Namoyse senkyo by acclamation. Law leader.
Sura, Mr. Presidente, the morsel nextel resolution ma moveal adapt tra Senate Resolution eleven dash sixty-one.
Si la motion namdu ne seken, e clear gam iba taitol.
Senate Resolution number eleven dash sixty-one. A Senate Resolution confirming the presidential reappointment to Mr. William Yiraygalau to serve as a member of the Board of Trustees of the Republic of Palau Civil Service Pension Plan and Trust for a term of four years. The Senate Resolution number eleven dash sixty-one amogongela omalkela President tra Mr. William Yiraygalau el mo odala Board of Trustees ra Republic of Palau Civil Service Pension Plan and Trust el Consele Ewalra. The Senate Resolution number eleven dash sixty-one aluldercia Presidenta Senate by request.
Si esere resolution giril William Yiraygalau el mo odala Board ra pension plan, gdambo sentyo, Senator Songo, Maria Soam.
Presidente, akmal badegi ngamal matataltal adat teal bor de malgora dirigasamriyari malo umrangari kasing seel mulmuel mulkutmoqla egal urira pension plan. Magulit de dilungir arbe kla ade bo se edel onongal ulte ablai diregal bodes senkyo lo giwa acclamation.
Si la motion namdu ne seken, metrigel roguil gongel du oi.
Oi.
Om tok, namoyse senkyo by acclamation. Bol bloktaqta mora adal wasay gal keldel nomini awida presence ra Senator sel ten ngartiang ya senkyo mortir aten. Mortir galte del nomini. Law leader.
Man saw le Presidente, ayegida kuknar resolution calendar ma tol mulmuel teal atendargid, ndiangala dorthin, ma fourteen. The morsel fifteen anya miselenis communication meng edenoutra miselenis communication eleven dash three three eight etiang amla Senator Tabelwal, moral Senate Presidentel saal giril sel incident ra as amna happena school bas, ma alsel aklasun. Al akasun. Direkun, anya miselenis communication eleven dash three three nine. Tiang amla Miss Timaro, el moral Senate President Paulis. El masal giril akofa trust fund investment report for the quarter ended December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Direkun, anya miselenis communication eleven dash three four zero. Tiang amla Senator Quartey, mora incident commander, Miss Rita Udui, el masal giril akovid nineteen. Magpe birasconcerna Senate il giril. Direkun, anya miselenis communication eleven dash three four one. Etiang amla twelve, Core State Legislature, mergauil Senate President Paulis. El komasal giril seventy-five capira Resolution number twelve dash zero two. Direkun, anya miselenis communication eleven dash three four two. Tiang amla Office of the Council of Chiefs, el mora delegate Kam Song. El masal giril Palau Council of Chiefs views, magaminta til giril sel House Bill eleven dash six dash one. Ma Senate Bill eleven dash, Senate Bill eleven dash forty-four, ST four. Ma House Bill eleven dash fifty-one, S five S. Ayegida miselenis communications, sel mlegeri el al session eda bodiul mora miselenis business, ma bestre teklar Senator sel anya miselenis business.
Miselenis business, Senator Isal.
Ndieru, magote oramne matataltal dibush meng, kadi masal uspiri teal sessioner gi de ema professionali officially congratulatory tagel bulu kupnamurni abesel kabonor ngi. Ma abesel olbi ngi. Eh, eh, oligit tiyasi balatakla urior, paygan namamre galak. Eh, congratulatory ta blura bilio, blura ngarada, ma blura ngesa. Mr. Presidente, miselenis ngaral malkoasual diyot si agirit trigel telal ngalbelal Isal. Ma imortir mulbira gatonga. Tiyegi nasku rak Cuba. Eh, emnamo tokta, ndyaksan danglasidiyatkevshel mal official, medical officers tokta. Itigemnamo tadagal ngatiang or more. El al February eh, since they been here, etamna gora sira napil tur tobentitikal doktar oleditangal bela, il gora xador tirayel bisit. So example, akme patientel ra Doctor Adelbay, Fraser. Eh, el three weeks sebila mesela ra Doctor Fraser, afustwi ingoba imortir. Yawukteme ra next week ingoba imortir. Etamso ba bitpudengela aurior ndi akredens. Il wasengariyambe birabulu medrigid ngososatokta ngartir. El namostatul gora labi ebrikputetir. Eh, watse, tiyanga, tiyanga masuka amkasaera akunyim alim eymet telara tarak. Angani seyil ulsel digeril blal ngu, malu benseyil blal aten ngiil education, ma ndi tiyaga manbe ngiri investment merbelal. Nifat nsebedkasi etamne free investment merbelal, en Cuba ngititimorak Cuba, resakirtir. Igida dimegi galifoshun shirasipir. Akimoduiti asenator Quartey wasay of course naal soru mal di takezal tokta di treidetokta la ndi akumese tiyaga la deserve a little better increase a compensation. Malo umrangal wasetiranga tiranga amle wira twenigertir. Eh, yagurrengasitla amaldi mungil a selval examination tirra el amorniya samtans next month. Akimoduiti amal igorde legumese tiyaga investment rebela ole el atedilu madengera tokta ngarbelal. Omasinirtir la nganadi withintenius etuknu vitair waygal gor Senator Quartey. Mang giril mixturing ayegil distalti alil dangarangal gede mora school way trigayid ngalga el mey et holdar tir. Holdar tir mal eh, tir a amolutetir al besel ospitarigid lidilu sel il bile giril. Amamshulam.
Msulangi, Senator Isal, Marion Odo. Senator Songo.
Presidente, homsawra te alim, bol seygal giril mo duliya miselenis rangaga. Ngari sel miselenis communication eleven dash three forty, ngar Senator Quartey mora incident commander, Miss Rita Udui. Ngariyamal tol blal bol seel wukmulusel mora incident commander. Ndigulit ma bol gora osishul togoi ma be birat togoi ngalalchelsel baviera swagal dirigal mo gora momelgoy. Ngariyam togoi, Mr. Presidente, toga kabaral kasing there is a method to this madness. Alulgora tiang agora kasing ayhopengariyam ora ungil tretele la urior. Giril teal gora be birat tami godo gora amokasing tiang tumru ungil ngasel meral te telela ndiagale agesesagora dimral morba. Mang madogora unsel hoprigid kasing in the ende ngariyam ungil risaltel mosedem sa. Magada hoppe aureng kasing Ministrya Health alamal lutautra aurelir endingiril mo obenterire, emargon ya momesa yegi del geyses. Yoligitel kasing bol blokdi review ayegi del gukora tretele urior. El mal mo sobakliya adar belal. Ling selongieru el swagal mo duliye, Mr. President tra tiyegi losishul togoi agora togoi lospiri kasing kolalal damets. Kolalal dametsa luluspiri, Mr. Presidente kasing sel sumka mutmokrat togoi ngarayegi al unintended el momutmoqlo. And just because sel modukliya awukto gora magamade sel modukliya dubel mol trail eliminate the enemy. And unfortunately, ngariyam teel innocent tel dirigal mo matamal. Malgol ayse, Mr. Presidente, ling I hope Ministrya Health, Ministrya Health and Human Services amlo duli ra sel mitingregid kasing al tangla amorniya arad al mosmeert tiang. Ma qmal oligit kasing elborsel gotul kulbabil sebarir. Egadamkasa la ade di kawadengey kawad. Ma qmal ngartiangey malourengi ngaranglungu edro gui kasing bol se edel oibigit tiang ngalagal borigi segil. Akmal, akmal mal aswar segil obreo del ngaranglungu de ngarangdu swirikto gora adar belal, ndik agomla kasing kidha ngal tangatel belu yemo se edel mal mesanga ungil el gukka mosobakli da ngar madad taim. Ndik giril, Mr. Presidente, mal oligit kasing bol sebeela Ministrya Health del losiga bekel te al. Altsuguma el alaga school, ndiagudengi kasing ngara sebarir kukpo si il omesetigegid al adra urior, be birat tami tumal mo albanarigid. Ebo lo mesel adra urior il dirigal gukka bestrisel te li lolungul il dirigal dekal swada tumal under stress, mte dirigal sebarir gukka gukma affecta familyertir. Bol si il omesel gukka omesetigal adra urior, ebo bestrisel te al il dirigal lolungul eh, giril tirgal uriora meragabliriri mong tuguni nus. Agoligit kasing bol seel dirigal gora ngariyam ungil processertir il chegar tir meng gora ngariyaklul dakter tigil gukniyin al tam kasing tokmo autsay de mesois. Ma ayhopese ngariyil gora tetele la urior il ensure kasing tirga kital madengi kasing se MD negative la akluga mo positive. Se tiyaga mo tiril, Mr. Presidente, mal lastly ak madengek ma sing ngariyayegi del resources longseer arad giril teal gobi, de mengariyam ngaragil quarantine isolation facility. Anding ngariyara ade, Mr. Presidente, because namomoyegi ding mal affecta familyertir il ndiagalsabaril ngara dal marabara kabliriri matamosi ga be biras yo. Edirigal mo impacter tir financially. Ngitil napasase segil grant walgora wave of procurement alsebeela Ministrya Health and Human Services, sel dirigal bol odarsan isel especially mortigil family, mal gora struggle during this time. Altsuguma sebeel gora osiga abekal alduul el mongosutri letamal gora obaradertir al altaim. Egadamal oligit segil te al, Mr. Presidente ingaga mal mrengasuleme bo da dal gidil adra ha Senate, ma housee dol mulmel loluseora executive branch sel tel loyibigit yegi del gukka talbanarigil al altaim, Mr. Presidente. Msula.
Msulangi, Senator Songo, Senator Tabelwal.
Sir, Presidente, te alim, diw diatrigutame kudarsa sesel koramiselenis. Agote mo subisel goriyam Senator Isal giril trigel nasku ra Cuba. Oi trigil tokta ngatiang dodengelo setel amamrengam giril uluswala wudir. Kadirigal madengasikadigamit etrigel tokta ngi mle malsaw de trigel nasku. Nosegal mitetrigil terur aralge del nasku ra Cuba, el altaim etangatiang amora February ngariyadamey yo ma ngagid Levenardet Jose. Imortir il maya suyama ngarangbar, etrigal ngagiril gar el nasku ra Cuba el al February. Trigil dirigal bedemi. And he is here, he is here. 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 Because he is the principal. And he is here, he is here. 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 And he is here, he is here.
Senator Sambau. Unfortunately, we are going to Cuba. And remember, Dr. Trupkulam, the president, who was here, who was here. And he was here, he 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 was here. Senator, you are here.
Senator, I am here. And we are in a situation where we are here, for the past few weeks. We are focused on the COVID. But we are in a community spread. And we are here, we are here. And we are here, we are here. And it's unfortunately, we are here, we are here. And 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 we are here, we are here. We are all clear. And we are here, we are here. And we are here, we are here. Evacuation route for the tsunami. And we are here, we are here. 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 Something needs to be done about that. And we are here, we are here. 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 Thank you, Senator.
Senator Whip. Senator Inabo.
Mr. President, we are in a situation where we are here. Mr. President, we are here. And we are here, 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 we are here. And at the same time, we are here. And we are here, 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 we are here. Minister of Finance, Starus, Cross Act, the Cross Act. And we are here, we are here. And we are here, we are here. Minister of Human Resources and Development. And we are here. M H R C T, the Minister of Tmatuul, P V A. And we are here, we are here. They are working on the program, Merge, the higher level. And we are here, we are here. 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 The financial report. And we are here, we are here. Eighteen million. We are here, we are here. Pandemic unemployment assistance. Pandemic unemployment benefits. And available, and other level. So, we are here, we are here. And we are here, we are here. And we are here, we are here. W I O A, oversight, or Sarah, January 11. And we are here, we are here. The board of W I O A. And we postponed oversight hearing in February 28.
You are not against it?
No, sir. Mr. President, we are here, we are here. And we are here, we are here. Due to rise of COVID on our island, requirement for social distancing. And we are here, we are here. The director of the meeting, oversight. And we are here, we are here. And we are here, we are here. And we are here, we are here. There is no need to meet in person. And we are here, we are here. 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 Mr. President, we are here, we are here. Thank you, Mr. President.
Senator Inabo, we are here. And we are here, 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 we are here. There must be something wrong. And we are here, we are here. Five thousand. And we are here, we are here. And we are here, we are here. They get paid by salary. And we are here, we are here. 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 And you save money. And we are here, we are here. 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 Senator Isal.
Mr. President, I am here. And we are here, we are here. And we are here, we are here. And we are here, we are here.
We are here, we are here. And we are here, we are here. And we are here, we are here.
I am here, I am here. Let's go straight to Minister of Finance, the president. And we are here, we are here. 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 We haven't landed yet. And we are here, we are here. And we are here, we are here. And we are here, we are here. We cannot work with them. And we are here, we are here. And we are here, we are here. And what authority do you have? For the level, we are here, we are here. That's what I'm calling for. By leaders, by House, by Senate, by the minister, by the president. And the Republic. And the spirit of the world. And we are here, we are here. No, no, no. Let's land on this earth and distribute this money. And the president, the minister of finance, the president of the Senate, must be here. And the minister of finance, the House. And I know you can speed it up. Thank you.
We are here, we are here. And 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 after all, the more responsible, the more. And we are here, we are here. 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 Lord Leader.
Mr. President, we are here. Mr. President, we are here. And we are here, 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 we are here. The WIWA is asking if they are giving us 18 million. Of course, they are giving us the 1st year. They are giving us 18 million. They are saying they are not giving us 18 million. They are asking if they are giving us the 1st year. The WIWA is saying that they are giving us the formulator to discuss the program. They are asking if they are giving us 18 million. They are asking if they are giving us 18 million. They are asking if they are giving us 18 million. The president is saying that they are not giving us the WIWA. They are asking if they are giving us the table. They are saying they are not giving us 18 million. They are saying they are not giving us 18 million. They are not giving us 18 million. They are not giving us the most appropriate way. They are saying they are not giving us the recommendation of the chairman of the president and the ministry of finance. They are saying that the president is not giving us the appropriate way. They are saying they are not giving us 18 million. They are saying that the 18 million is not beneficial. They are not giving us the way they are giving us the benefit. The president is saying that they are not giving us the way. They are not giving us the role in the senate. But also the government is saying that the 18 million is limited. They are not giving us 18 million. They are not giving us 18 million. They are not giving us the way to discuss the program. They are not giving us the 18 million. They are not giving us 18 million. They are not giving us 18 million. The president is saying that they are not giving us 18 million. They are not giving us 18 million. They are spreading the issue. They are not giving us 18 million. The other thing is that the reporter is saying that the information of individuals is not good. And that's understood. The president is saying that they are not giving us the report. They are not giving us the passio. They are not giving us the passio. It is possible to avoid the passio. They are not giving us the passio. They are not giving us the positive. They are not giving us their life. At the same time, they are not giving us the passio. They are not giving us the positive. They are saying that the information is not good. The chairman is saying that the 18 million is not good. They are not giving us the passio. They are not giving us the passio. They are not giving us the state. 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 They are not giving us the problem. The president is saying that they are not giving us the help from the community or the public health to help the problem. of the Ministry of Health and Human Services is to contact tracing. They are not giving us the tracing. They are not giving us the positive. They are not giving us the symptoms. They are not giving us the state. They are not giving us the state. They are spreading the community. They are continuing the situation. They are not giving us the school. 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 They are not giving us the Taiwan import or export of the Taiwan. They are not giving us the Taiwan. They are not giving us the Taiwan. They are not giving us the problem. They are not giving us the problem. They are not giving us the problem. They are not giving us the challenges associated with it. Even though they are not giving us the vaccine and the hospital is overwhelming. The president is saying that they are not giving us the effort. They are not giving us the way. They are not giving us the way to address the problem. They are not giving us the way. They are not giving us 14 days. They are not giving us the release. They are not giving us the help to deal with the COVID and continue to spread the community and import the message. The president is saying that they are not giving us the way to address the problem. They are not giving us the tourist, the business, the school, the hospital. They are not giving us the way to do the traditional function. They are not giving us the way to help the way the chairman is saying that they are not giving us the way. Sure, Mr. President.
Sure, Senator Alavell. Senator Sangav.
Mr. President, I am not saying that they are not giving us the way. The way the senator is saying that the president is saying that the public health regulation is section 12. They are not giving us isolation and quarantine facility. They are providing the passio. They are not giving us privacy. They are not giving us furniture. They are not giving us recline. They are not giving us access to internet. They are not giving us ability to provide employees. They are not giving us lawyers. The president is saying that they are not giving us the way to provide the facility. They are not giving us the way to provide the school. They are not giving us the way to provide the school. They are not giving us the way. The president is saying that they are not giving us the way. The president is saying that they are not giving us the way. They are not giving us the way. They are not giving us the way. The chairman is saying that they are not giving us the way. Hopefully, they are not giving us the way. They are not giving us the way. They are not giving us the way. The president is saying that they are not giving us the way. They are not giving us the way. They are not giving us the way.
Senator Sangav, the senator is saying that they are not giving us the way to provide the parents breakfast and lunch. They are not giving us the way. Senator Alavell.
The president is saying that they are not giving us the way to provide the school. They are not giving us the way to provide the school. They are not giving us the way. They are not giving us the way. They are not giving us the way to provide the school. They are not giving us the way to provide the school. They are not giving us the way. 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 They are not giving us the way to provide the school. They are not giving us the way to provide the school. They are not giving us the way. The president is saying that they are not giving us the way to provide the way. They are not giving us 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 the way. Sure.
Senator Cortey.
Mr. President, the way to provide the way is the way. The opinion is that they are not giving us the way. 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 They are deciding that they are not giving us the way. 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 It is not possible to limit the mobility. In fact, they are not giving us the way. They are not giving us the lockdown until the ministry gets some control. They are extreme. The president is saying that they are not giving us the way. They are not giving us the way. They are not giving us the incident commander which is right now and the commander is the structure. Ndilul wa se, mem, toura ministera mobilizer member sa NEC, le i abebir tirgaya ungra atra agal state. Bosil engage sa state, ma luset teal babilngadel mo. Wa se, in cases, as cases are sent home, many families are struggling with this, eh, with, with it adding to the stress. Therefore, real engagement with various states in Palau is critical to identify, proper isolation placements and support, which means iagaidl. Akundaseng, Mr President, eng, alsum, ndigiredl mobilizer NEC al de declare a national emergency. Egida, namadigal se edel manage teal belu. Ngaramadigal se edel lospeertirge edal ngitar rokir. Aldodun bedel, ndi mora kobid. Regi gidl torul 20 million. Feather programel mora helda, 14 million. Ndispecifical, 14,259,770 dollars. Mahalaguker. Ngaramadigal se edel imol belu, bomtro NEC, ma mesai gel, agel available, legal rogul grant sa di ngariya available fundsel mor gire, emor gire, emor gire. Ngariya specific grantel mora, mora school, lorortenyaa public healthel, la kmedengi, senatore Tabalual. Ma tingal el mea wa se, mal blakatakla, wasi, ndigalsela ministera held, el olngitel el lungul, tekena. Tamal masat seguktogora auguru, emlamostartel, disintegrate. Eh alsumkumundasosin diagal happen a disaster in a week, mark my word, it will happen. Ma kungitl wa se tiidl babie, llangasiar adal wa se namogedel mobilizer NEC, ma igerogul sektor representra NEC, amosibil maygal tooi, emol mutel helpra ministera held. Otherwise, disaster is gonna happen. A disaster teagid. Sel kolapsa adra held, aul ma kuligerin tirgaidl export, eh by the way, alsum tirgaidl export ta ngilgidel morse, ngaramadigal kuuspeertir. Akuliger wa se, sel bola karad, insabela infectedel adra heldel omkararak, teadili ooy. We're gonna get there. We're gonna get there. Kadu mral mo budul se gid. Ma kungitl wa se, eh gidro gui. Ndikunel wa se, ngaral avenue abodo yakni, demossebeedel. Ndigundaswen, ngiril centralize, namodigalsabeela diwan el sektor. Eh helda namodigalsabeela, ma lwaisekumelal dangartang, ngaramiselinusulwa se, a helda namodigalsabeel. Kenar, they're in the state, la kolaps. Ma kungitang, sum se yidat adudunirela. Shula.
Senatore Tabalual.
Sen takman ngangseela, senatore Quartey agel gidl mal blakatakla, senar omregel mea kmetu akra nemu. Mo'tmul open aton, ma quasel, kadi mo waise, quaseng ngariya meeting NEC, tiang mla NEC mlategobet, ta sendirgaga meeting NEC, le teal luroradirgana held. Ma NEC didal al, minglatigilaheld. Et teagidl agel executive order dirgadu spe. Blitsana presidenta mosaow. Ya igal tablol gungui, adirigamulmol ma se, gederig prevent. O do spe executive order rapprevention. Edi a executive order msaadil alta ma, arakta aksibelau. Ma atel mral melto akra nemu, endiwanal adal luror no okratwangal. Ndigaradana obis, edirgaga meeting ra NEC, lgora blalogodonin, et to se yidrigimigil ra held, eh emergency dirgana, agalinsira held. Ma Kundasengirel go senter quarteya waibdool. Namogedel al sugum gilolindis together, NECa, amogoklo bekal emergency. Se aditaktilirek mbedengel wa se, se alastamigil lurorwaise. Shula.
Senatore Tabalual, ga diregal woomeseril wa se igal school, kalitsbil merula galil gular parentsel, ndiang ngariya, ilang ngariya ngwayanaga, ngwayan ngariya agel, gal lgilidl merule, ngarangal gedeagal, eh ilan diagdorul, mong agel galal amadeel, kule baylungil, mo sigarolel wa se agel, elementary school merula gal, kalitsbil merula gal, le baylungudorar adal momla galiruk. Flo Lider. Ah kamol, kamol.
Oy, mral waisei presidenta dibolwata, mral waisei legal school, amla albel orosa gal el mol, galil se gidl quarry, mong ngariya storysertir, ngariya gal, ngariya adal merule. Masegida ulmogederekidik menshion sel NEC, sel NEC selbodonokratable, eh direktura adugeshuna member NEC. That comes from that direction, wasi, ke school, ga momesay almolabel, le school, omra la facility ma, gal ngariya inventoryirtir. So seasweel muktmoklamhalakmo msaasei, et aksmuktila singra wingrolela mosel se gid. Shula.
Flo Lider.
Mr President, la diga, ah miselinus, mother utoban announcement, mal ngariya announcement ra gibil senatore.
Announcement. Senatore Sungirong.
Shula, Presidente. Announcement, tadi, ngariya, a meeting lo modongiya rogul belau, ra durustey. El meeting lobongela, alsel kamitirgarasi, si YSA community culture, you do sports, affairs, entirgaidl rogul members, mong gel senatorsesorilchona meeting. Teana dimomsadu sel traditional title dispute bill. Ngia goraldesfirma, piragamentertir soril mitragamitim. Hmm durustera, senorituni seven, na teni emra, sel obisertir ngara, tel mutrol biraglulau. Shula.
Maria Wod. Announcement, senatore Inabo. Oh, diang. Maria Flo Lider.
Hola, Mr President, la diga announcement, ma, di dauran soril bekla ade, el nosbil contributer, mertea sesor el alsil, se bol sebeedel, eh mora sel momosimre, ma, eh muval ngalitel bla, el subjectu gol of the chair.
Sinamoshon ramdongesegan, metirgaidl rogul gongel du ooy. Om tok. Amoise.